Good evening, the zoning quarter appeals to the town of New Canaan will come to order on October 2nd, 2023. When we call your case, we ask that each presenter from up to the left turn, identify themselves or yourself as a property question. Take the first request of the board, identify the hardship and the reasons for the request. Remember, the hardship cannot be financial nature. You're going to the land and it's peculiar to your property and is particularly profitable. The board will then ask questions of you, after which you will sit down and we'll give those present a chance to speak. We have individuals on Zoom too, so make sure you can see your head when you're speaking from the microphone. You will then be given an opportunity to answer any questions or some of your requests. You record the meetings. Everyone must speak into the microphone. Everyone must state his or her name. The board will then go into business session, discuss your case and make a decision. There are five board members on the board and takes four positive votes to be granted to the variance. The first item on today's agenda is 194 Spring Water Lane, zoning variance on application David J. Rucci, Landowner 2 in Rucci, authorized agent for Robert Gina, Gina Tosio, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name. Owners for a variance of section 3.5 E3 and 6.5 B point, 6.5 point B point 2, to allow pool patio 14.2 feet in lieu of the 25 foot side yard setback, to allow retaining wall less, to allow hands to allow retaining wall, that's in 10 feet from the side property line and the 1 acre zone on 194 Spring Hill Lane, map 24, map 24, lot 241, lot 89.
We have to do it first.
Okay.
Um, Luke Pavan.
Present.
Jessica Cardon, present, Cynthia Dole, Missy, Bridget Barrett through, Catherine, um, Kristy Bonner.
Present.
And Brittany Singer.
Present.
So on board the ultimate, so thank you, appreciate. Hey, good evening, I'm Shannon, David, or did you do that? Sarah, do you have the mail receipts?
Um, we didn't get them or the file yet.
Really? No.
Okay. Uh, I'm here with Rob D. Antatio, he's the owner of 194 Spring Water Lane in New Canaan. Um, and we're looking for a variance this evening for a, uh, two variances. One is for a stone wall that is five feet from the property line in lieu of 10 feet, which is your requirement. And the second is for a pool patio to extend 14.2 feet into the setback in lieu of 25 feet. Um, just to give you some orientation, this is the house on Spring Water Lane. Um, you just can see that, uh, it's on a, it's on the curve of Spring Water, Spring Water Lane and, uh, it suffers from some, uh, pretty severe topography on the property. This is looking down Spring Water Lane. It's a, this looking from the, from the driveway, but, um, this, this slide in front of you. Um, getting to the application itself, as you come into the back of the property, um, you're looking at sort of this patio and this property line. Um, the property in itself is very well screened from all of their neighbors. We will show you that as we get forward. You'll note, here's the, the property itself, and as you can see, it's this area right here that I'm circling, where the patio goes into the setback and then there's this stone wall that's been, um, constructed in this area. And this is existing today. Um, what had happened was in 2020, when the pool got put in, it was, um, in the fall of 2020, they started to construct the pool. Um, the pool itself is compliant. You recall last time over here, we had a pool that was actually a little bit over the coping. That's not the issue that we have today. The issue we have today is the patio being extended. Um, the rule in New Canaan is essentially that any time, the patio in and of itself can be in a setback, but if the patio is connected to a pool, it has to meet all the setbacks. So in this particular case, this is connected to the pool. It's supposed to meet the, um, setback of the pool. It does not in this particular case. And the reason why it does not in this particular case is when the pool is constructed, this is just a, the kind of a better density for it. You'll see that, um, we have a really large topography drop right here. We drop, um, it basically drops about 25 feet between the stone wall on this west side property, all the way to the east side of the property. And in this particular case, it drops down about almost 10 feet pretty quickly. As you can see, it goes from 215 down to, uh, to 10, I'm sorry, it drops 5 feet, um, pretty quickly. And I'll show you a better picture of that. Uh, so this area right here is what we're looking for as far as.
David, does that continue on the other side of the stone wall though, Matt?
I'm sorry?
On the other side of the stone wall, I guess on the west side, does it continue like that straight up or?
Yeah, and I can show you a better picture of that. Uh, well, you can pass it here. So here's the area that we're looking for the variant for. Here's your stone wall that was constructed. Um, and as I said, it's constructed, uh, the ruling in, um, it became 70 feet from the property line. This is 5 feet from the property line. Um, and it was done purely to basically hold back the topography that was coming down in a particular slope. You can see this stone wall above it is the actual property line. And then this was the one that was, that was pressed in. And you can see here sort of how that topography drops down, whether it's from the, uh, area here, which is the, um, draft of the property. And then you can see up here where these trees sit. This is your five foot drop from here to here.
So maybe just accidentally once on the left hand side, well, thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate your time. On the left hand side.
And you can say your name.
I'm Robert, I'm the old one. Thank you. So just on the left hand side of the property, what happened is we've used that one slide. During construction, when we got this approved, there were tremendous rainfall surges that came down here in the back. And what would happen was it would wash into the pool, kind of like this way. So, um, this was not something that was driven by the contractor or the pool contractor, the leasing contractor, but my son. So at the time, once this was approved, we, we looked at everything and said, you know, what is the best case scenario here? Knowing how to keep the water away from the pool, away from the house and kind of keep it running down the hill. So it's consistent away from the pool. And speaking with some people, uh, contractor engineer, which we'll see a letter from engineer later, we basically constructed this wall and extended the patio to square it off. Um, because it kept the water away from deteriorating the pool. Um, this was something that was done during the, the construction process and, um, it's knock on wood, it's been, it's worked so far. And, um, just being that, you know, I had a wall there before. I put this wall in not thinking this was a violation. Otherwise, you know, I actually would have, uh, put this before, uh, committee or the proper personnel in planning and zoning. But this is something that just, it was an unforeseen condition that we just had to deal with because they were just, uh, stream runoffs from the, from the back property line going straight down to the end of the.
Right, you know, so you're saying this replaced the wall that was there?
No, what happened was is this was all sloped. Basically, so water would just like, just go like this into the pool. So if we're looking, if you drew a straight line here, that is like the setback right over here, kind of right over here. So this part of the patio, which is not tied into the wall, it's all below this patio is kind of all gravel. So any water that fell underneath this patio kind of just went down and it didn't make its way over to the pool to damage the shell or the other part of the pool. Um, this basically wall was built just to take the water from the hill back up here and just run it down here. And this patio was extended obviously because I'm on a regular lot. So we just kind of squared it off and put gravel underneath here. So any water that came underneath here kind of would just, you know, kind of run down off the hill here. Because once we built this wall, we started putting dirt in here and we started seeing it was still a little soggy, but it kind of prevented the majority of the water coming in. So my contractor felt like if we just put the patio here, it would kind of just keep the whole soggy-ness and, you know, keep everything intact and not deteriorate the pool. So again, not their fault. It's totally on me.
Direct the water to.
Straight down. If you look at the, if you go back to the map. So the area in question was here. So what does is you can see the drop off. It's 215, 208. And then it just basically will just come down this way and go towards this way. And as you can see, it drops off 203, 203 and just runs between me and the properties next door.
Does it stand? Your property go on to the neighbor's property?
No, of course, this is my property.
No, I'm saying if you look at this map here, it looks like it directs it onto the shop right there.
Well, there's a natural, I believe this is a natural wetland that runs all the way straight down here. So it's kind of between both of our properties that this order continues to run.
The town engineer reviewed this work and he signed off on the CO for the pool on the, the metal wall and the patio. And, um, it's part of the town ready policy that when new construction, um, happens that water discharge, discharge from our property can't be directed toward the other property. So it wouldn't have made it past engineering until this point, if there were going on.
So this law was there when she signed off?
Correct.
Yeah, I think the man, yeah, since you saw this.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay. In wetlands also signed off on this.
Yeah.
There's a wetland permit, um, but essentially this came to us because they submitted for a CO. It goes to engineering first, then it goes to the health department, then it goes to wetlands and then it comes to planning and zoning. When it made it to my desk, we found that the patio under the, where my, but it's, it's been approved by that really.
Right.
When was the first time that it was approved or some of that?
We got this in August of 2022 and then this kind of got pushed aside for a while.
So in 2022, all the other departments approved it.
Like a year ago.
Yeah, so here's, here's sort of a picture. You can see sort of the, the back of this property. This is the area that we're talking about right here. Then you can sort of see the, the screening and the, um, the drop off here between these two properties. Uh, it's just another picture at the corner. I'm sorry. Uh, this is showing the mission of the wall. It was over a certain particular height. We would need another, uh, variant, but we're, we're under that particular height. So probably sort of that here, that would be, would be, you'd need different, um, different comments for that. Um, it's just showing you, this is a cross spring water, um, from the pool. This is really a very dense area, um, lots of trees on either side of the neighborhood. Um, either side of this particular property can have literally zero effect on any of the neighbors as part of, um, the conference plan, uh, to the rear neighbor. Um, and you can see the, the neighbor, uh, on the other side, this is kind of, this is the big line. This is where the big drop off is. Um, and this particular neighbor, Ken Hopecraft, has given a letter of support to his application and actually mentioned in his particular letter that, um, he had had similar problems with drainage on this particular property.
What about the neighbor to the? What was there on here? I guess it's the south.
This south is.
The one with the wetland.
Oh, down here. So here the, this is basically the wet in the south right here. So these, you can see your, your, um, uh, you're looking from the back of the pool over, you're looking southwest into this neighborhood. This is where the water gets picked up.
Go back to that picture.
This one?
Not like on the bottom of the picture where it's the wooded area, but I think.
Right there?
Yeah, what about that neighbor?
Uh, that neighbor, I mean, we didn't receive any comment from that neighbor.
I think that, uh, yeah, that's where the neighbors. Oh, we didn't receive any notice of this in the letter dated September 18th.
So we'll give you a minute and a minute. That's okay. So what was your name?
Matt Kudo. Um, the property's Mark Shaw. I was a prior reporter and I'm a colleague. The next one there.
Okay. So after they speak, then you can speak and then maybe they can address their points and then you come back to it as much as we need. So.
Justin Harden, um, I just would like an explanation as to how the patio got so much bigger in the first place based on the submitted 2020 building permit application, which seemed to only have a patio that was going to be built adjacent to, I guess, that's marked at the on hand, that area. And then everything got built, whether that towards that wall hole, that was not originally submitted as we've now seen. And it's moving, I don't know.
Now that building.
Um, this is.
Their plan.
Um, yeah. Um, it seems to me that that extension that was not submitted with the building current is how some of these variances came to be. And I don't know if the retaining wall would have been needed um, if the original plan had been thought. So I'd like that address, just to understand how that came to be.
I think there's two separate things. The, the retaining wall in and of itself would certainly have been needed. Whether the patio needs to be extended or not is, is different. It is, I think, a different variance and a different question. Um, the, the applicant position, uh, in this particular case is that the patio was just used to square off up against the pad, against the stone wall and was working as well to alleviate drainage there. If it was piling up in between, the, the water was piling up in between the, the stone wall and the pattern. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, the wall is basically to run, any runoff was to basically direct the water straight down the hill. And then the patio was to basically just keep, uh, the surface from being muddied up and any deterioration of any groundwater pumping over towards the, uh, the pool shell.
I have the original impression from early remarks made that he just squared or cornered off. Part of that was dirt, whereas I still don't think I fully understand like the entire area that had furniture on it.
Yeah.
That was not planned for when the original submitted permit.
I believe this was right up to here, right? Okay. And then, so this is the area where the wall and the water ran a question. So that's why we.
So there was no patio at all between the pool and that line?
It was not.
Right.
Or not at all.
So I'm, that's why I've been asking the question. If that had not been built as per the original plan, the retaining wall had been built lower down closer to the pool.
So the only portion of the retaining wall that's violating the setback is, um, on the, for it turns on.
Yeah, so I understand what you're trying to, I'm trying to get the, you know, but for the expansion, would these things have needed to have been done in those places?
So say if the wall would be built closer right on top of it?
Essentially, I don't know right now because this is what we're trying, but because it's an after the fact variance.
Right.
It wasn't done the right way.
But what she said, what she's saying is the wall wouldn't be right on top of the pool, but it's five feet from the line now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Now, it could be five feet to the east or five feet.
I mean, I'm not an engineer. I don't know if they could have built.
Why couldn't you have built it five feet to the rest?
If, if they hadn't made the patio, couldn't they have potentially used that land?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, you know, come out and basically told us how to do this. We had to have that letter that, um, on the end there and you could go to that.
So I guess my question is which was built first? The retaining wall that was new or all of that patio that wasn't?
No, the retaining. Well, I mean, but it was done as part of one project.
I mean, yeah, we.
Well, we're not.
I don't know that we're gonna get the full set of facts for.
Well, to answer, to answer your question, the retaining wall was built first due to a field commission because of whatever drying off. And then we plan on putting grass and seed down there, but this, we found that the grass would feel soggy and, and mushy and, and marshed. So we decided, and, uh, I'm pronouncing it's all, it's my fault, to put a patio and square it up because the, the lot is irregular. So it's kind of weird how the pool was kind of set up within those boundaries. So we kind of felt like if we squared it off to, to prevent any water from getting closer to the house with, you know, being in like a marshland there, it would be a better, you know, you know, long-term protect the pool.
No, no, that, okay. But I think the question is why the wall had to be five feet from the property line?
Uh, due to the slopes.
Due to the slope. Basically, uh, according to the engineer at the time, that was, that's basically put the right wall in order to keep the water back from the pool shell. And that was before the patio, he's actually instructed. Patio, to your point, was not, it's going to be a, is a, whether it's a design feature, whether that's the way to look, to square off. That's the way they, that's where they put the patio. If the patio, you know, patio could technically be taken out, there's a portion of the patio, um, David, the wall can't do it. I'm sorry, the wall can be taken up, but the wall could be taken out and redone.
Yeah.
Potentially, but it's only in that one spot. So we wouldn't be doing that. It would only be in the area. Let's get the picture back. The wall itself is five feet. I think this, the wall, so it's only, this wall is not in violation going around the back of the patio here. It's really just in this one spot here. Right? So this is not, this wall right here that backs up against this particular patio
is not.
is not, is not in this setback. That is informing. Okay, it's, it's 10 feet away. It's this area that is not on this corner.
The contractors used for this project and the engineers, I think, probably regularly do this.
My understanding is that.
Only the right line, it bears a normal thing.
Yes.
You know, um.
We were interested in.
Yeah.
Barrettville County.
Yeah, he signed up on the detention system, does all this work here. Yeah, so he's very familiar with this.
So the engineer, if, if I'm reading the letter right, it stated September 20, 2023. They did this study before the wall was built?
Yeah, they came out and they give a bit of a, a visual and then they came out.
And they did know about looking into what the setbacks were at that point?
Not apparently. I mean, we asked them to write the letter before the hearing. That's why we should really have a letter from your engineer as to why they made this decision. Which is why it stated this month.
Well, then at the wall, they hear from the neighbor, the wall is five feet or 10 feet. I see this like a different issue than the patio, because it sounds like there's going to be need to be retaining wall in either case. I mean, I get the curved slope attempt, but you could have a slope right into your, we're not, what you call me. Maybe they could put like a curtain drain, remember?
I'm not just seeing that house there and reading first that retaining wall, although again, I'm playing from a point of it's not an essential use for a property and how it's well. It's not, and there's a lot of things that, you know, but for that, all this and all these other things happen. So.
They don't have a variance with pool, they need a variance with the wall?
No, I know.
I'm for this patio over here. So the question.
It's only part of it. So I get that. I know a lot of it is component, but I'm just grappling with it.
I can't get it.
Back explanation for it.
I'm grappling with the patio.
Oh, I mean, I, I think that to your point, I mean, the patio was done more from an aesthetic reset perspective to square it off.
That's what I think is.
Um, and it was also based on the fact that they were just, it was just a soggy area at the time. So they're like, I'm going to start to deal with that part of it and not have, you know, wet or whatever back there. Uh, the stone wall in and of itself would have been necessary, I would have been any case. Um, whether it was, whether we came up there prior or prior to, we would have been not requesting the same thing. We would have still been showing the commission that the, um, drainage policy worked. Because obviously that's kind of the most important thing for the town as well, as neighbors that the drainage is going the same way that it had before. Um, and that there's not an increase in drainage somewhere else. Um, so the, the stone wall itself, you know, I don't, whether could they move five feet away from there or not? I don't know. This is the, this is kind of the area right here, this corner here that comes out. It's, that's the, that's in question from the property line, the, the two property lines right there. Um, this part of the back wall is not a problem, uh, not probably in the sense that it's compliant from here. So it's really this part right here, well, probably one of the property coming down, the water coming down from 10.
Sure. Perhaps. My own question.
It's open, so we can talk when we go into executive session on their.
Yeah, got it, got it. Okay, Rich Carrick, what, you know, it was soggy before you put the, um, the, the stone down, right? But, you know, so where, where is the water being displaced now? I mean, if it's in a soggy area and water collected in the area, just because you've put a solid, you know, piece of wet concrete that dries, I mean, that, where's that water going? It can't disappear. Is it flowing someplace else? It's a good question, right? So there's two different issues here. There was surface water and then there was groundwater issues, right? So the wall basically gets rid of the surface area water that comes down the hill between, you know, that whole wetlands that just runs straight down. Kind of, I don't want to say channels it, but kind of just redirects it away. The other issue was the groundwater where when you put concrete down, you can put a 12, 18 inch gravel base below that. So as soon as the water comes out of there, it'll drop down into the ground and then kind of just seep away from the house. If you just have topsoil and regular soil on top, it'll just sit there and like kind of migrate and vegetate. So that's kind of what we did. We put the patio down, put the concrete down and put 12 inches, 18 inches of gravel. And then the water, as soon as it came over the ground, it just kind of went down and then it just, uh, moved to. They did require also, Rich, to, to digress a little bit. They go over to also your point. We put in a a coltech system here, which picks up all the surface water around pool here. So there is some contention on the property that this, uh, lane actually, the engineer, we designed a coltech system, we signed up, the layer requires us to do, to do the town requires us to do it close. We're catching with the redirecting, we're diverting and we're catching surface water. It's just, it's a really, it's just a bad corner. A really bad corner.
David, usually you have bigger pictures than this paper. Hard to read on here. What's that? Box that's last lines and the bottom.
This one?
Yeah, I'm on Playhouse, okay. Yeah.
So we're, we're requesting that. We're requesting next picture.
Uh, yeah, I think we should, yeah, good to be there. Thank you.
Okay, so there's, there's essentially, as you see here, this patio is 129, 120, roughly 120 square feet in the setback, that's the area that, uh, we were requesting the variant for. And then it's this side yard, uh, I'm sorry, it's this stone wall, um, on the corner, on this corner here. Um, and essentially we're asking for both of, based on the topography of the property. Um, it's required for the property in the regular shape of the lot that we're on at the corner here. Basically, everything has to be in, on this particular piece of property with the wetlands over here. Um, and the way the property slopes down from, as you can see, 200 and, uh, 15 to like 190 right here, everything's got to be put in this corner to begin with. Like, that's just where the house and any sort of improvements are going to be. Um, we're asking, we're pressing for the variant after the fact for this based on the topography really than anything else. Obviously doesn't really matter down in this area. It does in this area, and as you saw from these pictures, you can see there's already a, a slope that comes into this particular piece of property. Um, the wall is basically providing this additional protection basically from the slope in the area, from the topography in the area. And it also is protecting the weapons in that particular area of the property.
What about the necessary use requirement? So if you have a hardship because of the topography, you still have a patio this big. Basically necessary use of your property.
I, as I said earlier, the, the patio in and of itself is separate variance from the wall itself. And, you know, I, I think the commission would have to look at both, the board would have to look at both those, met both those variance requests separately.
And just to be clear, no one signed off on the patio? So there was no, um, or in the process, where anyone saw the patio in the drawings?
No, the, the original patio that went through, I'm sorry, the original pool that went through did not have the patio squared off like this at the time. So that by the time it got to plan and zoning for the final CO, that's when they flagged and said, this is, you can't be, this is not supposed to be here. You would need a variance for this.
And I don't think that patio is there. I'm looking at the survey for what was built. The patio on that side wasn't included in the survey.
Correct. And, and you know, there's, you'll see some more of these, I think, in the future with, with patios and pools because, um, there's a lot of people that are building patios and pools not knowing that they're not supposed to be in a setback when they're passed to a pool. Which is not accurate. That's not where the rules are, but that's, that's unfortunate the way, uh, a lot of people have looked at that in particular.
What does a patio being attached to a pool, like what's in, I know the rules. Yeah. And what does, what's the attachment prong in that?
You're attached to the coping, the rule that we've been going off of the last few years is that there's a six inch strip of grass between the coping and the patio. You won't color it out.
Where does that, the hinge come from?
There's, there is a lot of pools that have been put in where the way that they, I don't want to say battered around the rule, but it was something that was accepted at the time is that if you put grass and put flagstone or something where you broke up a pool coping with the actual patio itself, then they wouldn't count that patio against, you know, as part of the pool and as part of the setback.
That is my question's coming from.
Yeah, but they, that's just the way it all, it was always done. That's the way the town planners used to sign off on it. Uh, Sarah's predecessor, uh, Lynn, I mean, Brooke, she had a big different opinion on that. And she came up, she basically decided that, um, anything in and around the pool, whether it was separated by any particular lawn or anything else, she considered that to be part of the full patio. There's a lot of, um, I don't know where that's going to go. I think the, the plan, the zoning commission is actually going to look, look into that in the next round of their regulations. Because there's at least, I mean, I have 25 pools that I can point to them and say, well, this was approved. It showed that you allowed it to happen. She just took a different position than other town planners have in the past. And I can't tell you why that was. It just, you know, I think the, the argument, um, you can, like I said, you can have a patio right in your setback line if you want to. But it's a statue pool, you can't. So that's, I can't tell you where the rule came from. Uh, I just can tell you how it had been interpreted in the past.
Can I ask, was the pool moved because looking at, it looks as if the pool was 27 from the property line, but you knew that it is now 25.3. So was the pool pushed out also?
Something property line, but you knew, Ed, it is now twenty five point three, so was the pool pushed out also?
Not if I know, no. Cool, I, cool, I would have to be pointing out from that.
I know, but she's a thing, she originally showed twenty seven.
In the um, survey that was submitted and approved.
We just put a contact in there, honestly, with new models, so that it's forty feet from the property line, and by moving forward is.
And my favorite, the second one is definitely.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It was both of those, yeah. I don't know if there's any other questions?
So I just wanna make sure I understand, so the patio was installed without going over the line initially? Or not?
So, when we went to the zoning, we got basically the patio, so kind of break this up, this large portion here.
Right.
Was not on the, was not on the plan, just this part here.
Right.
So we broke ground, dug the hole, and, you know, saw the whole water thing happening over here, so we went and put the wall up first. Once the wall went up first, then a month or two after that, we saw that this ground was like. Close, like, you know, right from from here, all the way there, so we said, hey, listen, let's square this up. Let's put this patio in, which from this green line over is not in conformance, and this little corner here is not in conformance. So let's just square this up, let's get rid of the water, let's put the gravel below, let's kind of just get this water down the hill. And into this wetlands area all down here, so it kind of stays away from the house and goes to its natural habitat down there. And that was done. So the pool went in October of twenty, and then all the major work noticed all these problems. The major work went into the springtime, and then directly right after that, once the wall went in. A month or so after that, we put the, we started the patio work, and then we just continued it all the way around, the gravel and stuff like that, and spring up to my end.
So, yeah, you can, you can, yeah, there was, there's actually a little corner here that we can also put in, that we are gonna take back. I mean, we are removing that small four square feet in this particular area.
And trust me, if we had to do this again, I would have never, for for eight inches, whatever it is down there, I would have never put that in there like that, so it was. You know, it's on me.
So, we are here to ask for both, we are asking for both the stone wall and we are asking for the, for the patio, um, we're asking, obviously, the. In and of itself, there there are separate variance requests. Uh, one is for this being five feet from the property line, in lieu of ten feet stone wall. The other is for the patio setback to be, uh, get rid of the patio setback from fourteen square feet. I'm sorry, from twenty five square feet, four, twenty five feet to fourteen feet, um, distance wise to the property line. Um, and once again, I'm just talking about the fact that we had this topography issue on this particular side of the property, it's mainly issues on this side of the property. Um, and we have, um, irregular shaped lot with respect to the front yard and the property, most of the building hadn't been done in this particular area.
Rich character gonna question, I I I know, I think I did, but just to confirm, the patio was wet set up with solid.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, because they put the gravel and tamped it down.
Right, then the slab, then the stuff.
You know, wire mat, orange slab, and then.
Okay.
Um, we did speak with the neighbor, uh. Luchats, which is, and they provided a letter indicating that they were um, in support of variance itself. Um, and we also, as I said earlier, had a letter from Fairfield County. Um, engineering, which indicated the rationale behind the construction of the wall at the time. And those are all, those are in your file as well.
Yeah, again, Rich character, I wrote the letter, and I I, you know, when you read the letter, whether it was five feet or ten feet, I mean, this letter is saying a wall is. Logical, I I get, but, you know, if he or she knew that it was in violation of the setbacks and. You asked the engineer to design something within the setback, in my opinion, I'm not an engineer, probably could have got done. So, I mean, the letter is just stating that a wall is necessary, not that it needs to be exactly where it is. And it couldn't be anyplace else on the property, he's not saying that, well, she's.
No, I mean, I I think that that's true, and I think, you know, but from the, from the applicant's perspective, not a but, but from the applicant's perspective, he just relied on. I don't think he had preference necessarily where the wall was going to be, other than it needed to have a wall.
And twice, I don't know, problems, check.
Yeah, no way. You didn't think, but, I mean, these people, I.
Rich, I don't wanna spend the money on this wall, trust me. Trust me, it wasn't cheap.
Uh, this is Christie Bonner, the um, the engineer only spoke to the wall, not the patio. So is the patio basically an aesthetic issue that you're just trying to address the mud?
Well, then you said it, it's both, right? It's it's a water issue and an aesthetic issue, so it's, uh, I mean, if you want to speak to that, I think you.
The water.
I mean, it's it's, at the time, it was something that was used from a, from a water perspective, but it's also square off, really. It can, you can look at it both ways, right, it's both aesthetic and it's, it was used to make sure that, you know, they weren't putting that soggy. Grasp on them, essentially, um, and it was more usable space to them. Um, but it's different than than the wall in and of itself, I mean, I think.
Well, there's a lot of things you can do with soggy, you're asking us to put in the patio.
I think that's a fair comment.
Yep.
And was the soggy, was the grass soggy or after putting in the repanning?
Was the grass soggy?
Did it become soggy or than what it was before?
Well, it was kind of like a process, right? So the wall went in first, we weren't really concentrating on the patio, so we're like, all right, we better get the water chatted. And get it running, not running on into the pool, so once we did that, we thought that would solve the issue. Then when we went ahead and built the topsoil and had it settled, we said, wait a minute. This is not, you know, it's a lot of groundwater, like I said before, there's a lot of groundwater, there's no more surface water. So, we went ahead and did the whole ground was set up with the patio and stuff, to keep the water below ground and running down the hill, so it was kind of. Kind of like the variances we're asking for, it was kind of separate in nature. We took care of the runoff problem, then we looked at the actual surface issue as to what, uh, was done with the uh, with the uh, top on the draft. And then obviously, we all sat there and said, okay, what can we do to, what what are our options here to not have instead of soggy, wet area and?
It's okay if you don't know if it wasn't worse before or after.
I lived with staying in that, trust me, it wasn't, it wasn't pleasant.
I I was trying to figure out if perhaps putting in a repanning wall. Was effective enough in diverting it that it made it soggy or it has, I'm just looking for.
Repanning wall goes on the backside.
I'm still trying to figure that out.
But I think, I mean, it it's, it's not. Someone's yard tomorrow, they don't just go and say, let's pave our yard, I mean, that's that's like extreme, they would put like a curtain drain or something, you know, you did a transport.
Well, there's a drain system underneath that, that's going to the coltechs. So there is, there is additional drainage.
So how come that doesn't, how come that drainage?
Well, I'm sorry, so compared to the coltechs, basically to take care of the surface water.
What I'm saying, you did a trench, like, eight or ten feet deep, you know, and 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 you put the landscaping fabric in, and then the pipe, and then. Creston, and that stops the water in the yard, and then that, and you immediately.
That's right, I knew about me personally, because I knew that that required approvals and stuff like that, so putting whole drainage systems in. But I never thought that patio required a formal approval to extend it to, so so. I I, that's exactly what happened, so I'm like, this, this was never approved with a piping system, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna go against the will, I just said, listen, just just put the brushstone in. Put the patio in, and.
He, yeah, so I think it's rich there, because so, I I would think, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah.
You had the option of putting all that's the drainage in, it could have been covered with topsoil and you could have grew grass seed. And it might have worked, or would, you know, or you squared off the patio, which obviously is preferable. I I would want a patio.
There's a couple of different options here, but yeah, there are a couple of options that you could have done too.
Yeah, okay.
This one's the easiest and the quickest and the fastest and the least uncomfortable.
Well, and 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 it's, it's better, it's. I, you know, it's aesthetically, it's better, and and it's usable, I mean, you could sit on it, grass, it's wet grass, you know, it's not as usable as a nice patio.
I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I'm just. I'll put words in my mouth, I would prefer the grass.
You prefer the grass?
Prefer the grass.
Oh, would that have a nice patio?
That's correct, well, just listen, from a heart perspective, it cost me a lot of life that I didn't wanna spend. And the fact is, I already had a patio, so why do I need this whole big thing around the pool? That's just from personal experience, I can't speak to that, but I would prefer a grass.
No, that's fine.
True, but I wouldn't wanna be sitting in.
Right.
One, right, around the pool after I just spent.
Got it.
Yeah, um. I think, if you have anything else for now.
I know, I know. Speak if you want, sure, cut back to the young speech, and then, if you wanna address it, one second. What are your concerns? There, and these, the neighbors will look sort of like that. You got it? You wanna state your name?
Uh, my name is Matt, I'm the neighbor, uh, of the property market shop. I was a proprietor of ours in uh, May of twenty one. So, I, you know, I really don't have much to say, I know this issue of where the water has been diverted and comes out quite a bit, I I respectfully. You never did that to me, I would have loved to appear about this, other than for the town's letter, but. I I have not had any drainage issues, um, I can tell you that, like, even after the massive rain we've had for the last two weeks. I had a little, uh, that school garden that's down sort of on the corner of the the property there, or down, like. Uh, sort of, right where it says shop, and um, there were no issues, and I, look, I'm not. Uh, I I'm not a sweetie will by nature, I'm happy to be one when I need to be, I don't find this to be a situation, I don't have an advantage to to this.
Is this, so this isn't causing runoff to the launch of your property?
As far as I'm aware. Um, because I I can tell you, our property, I don't exactly know, but our property also kind of sloped down in that direction, um, so. You know, we don't, we just don't have that issue, uh, even after the predicted rain.
I'm from Holland, um, uh, and I'm the property owner, uh, down downhill from that. Uh, my driveway runs right along this property line, uh, and I do have water coming in the driveway. Uh, and I'm not sure when it started, um, but uh, water definitely is coming off that property. Um, I also noted, um, you know, there's, there's a structure here right on the property line. We built right on the property line with with a shed, um. Again, the neighbor didn't approach me either, uh, I think I've lived here thirty years.
When was that built?
What's that?
When was that shed built?
About the same time, a couple of years ago?
No, it's more than a couple of, I'll have to get to the exact answer, more than a couple of years ago.
More than ten years?
No.
No, not more than ten years.
The pool was three years from October.
So that shed might be grandfathered in there.
How, three years?
Three years.
Can you look it up?
No, that's the rule, it's three years, but we don't know when exactly it was built.
Um, I don't either, I I I never had a problem with, again, with their thirty years, never any problem with any of the neighbors. Uh, I was on the wetlands commission myself for fifteen years, and um. Uh, I I believe in compliance with the law, I believe that people should, uh, find out lawyers and try to comply with it. And um, uh, I don't think that, um, after the fact explanations, uh, should be. To necessarily be accepted, particularly in light of, you know, another structure that's still out of compliance, uh, with the law.
Rich character with a question?
Yes.
So, I I think, let's get back to the point of water coming on to the driveway. I mean, can you be a little bit more specific, I mean, was more water coming on?
There's been a lot of water the last couple of years.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to know, I've noticed it more, uh, recently. Um, because again, this is very, this is very steep. Um, you, my traffic is down, and then you, the garage is underneath the house, so, you know, you have to go around this way, but you definitely see it. Um, and, um, you know, I I I think when the house was originally built, my house, they had to get a. It was too close to the property line for that driving, so they had to get permission, again, it's, it's sort of, um, the house is up here. And then most of it's wetlands down below, um.
Okay, uh, uh, the point of my question was, but it's not, I mean, whether that retaining wall was.
Yeah, I can't, I can't say.
By the way, or the other, yeah.
Your driveway is far away from that.
These is directing water, and that can't be directed.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can't say for sure it's a retaining wall, but I think there's a lot more development on the property than there used to be.
Well, but that's not, yeah.
Or that's bigger patio than it used to be, who knows, I mean, why not ask water engineers? But it's, so there's a problem with the shed, too close to the line, a neighbor said that kind of thing. I assume the onus is now the property owner to show spending more than three years. You, David?
I'm sorry?
The 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 shed's too close to the line.
Yes.
So the onus is on you to show spending three years.
Yeah, in our position, it has been over there three years. Has been more than three years there, correct?
Is it brief?
Yeah, that, I I don't know, we have this, a definition, and this wasn't the issue on tonight's agenda.
This did not, and this did not, it's really a issue for this particular.
That's not a thing, I'm not, I'm not maybe an issue.
In a different area, in some other.
No, not prepared for an enforcement action.
I know, but that would then be brought to the mission as an enforcement.
Different thing, it's set another year, what I'm saying is, while we're all here tonight. It would be helpful if you could figure out when this, not, not tonight, because you're not prepared for it, but to to figure out when the shed was gonna start.
Well, I mean, the only thing that I can say is that in October two thousand and twenty was when the pool began. And it was there at that particular time, in two thousand and twenty, or at least we're in two thousand and twenty three today.
My impression is that there were a number of changes to the wall. It wasn't all in the chat, it was all in the works. There were the retaining wall at one point, and something else bad later, I don't think it was all done at once.
Well, we're gonna have another hearing on that, it sounds like.
If we receive a formal complaint. If if they make a formal complaint and we ask them to move it and they don't, and then they appeal my request, then. I mean, this isn't necessarily coming back to the board.
Sure.
But hopefully, it's something that can get worked out, we try hard here to have people address one another's concerns with the most. Being drastic, but we're a small town, or try to think of us as a small town and being compassionate with a lot of. Yeah, so, so you understand, so I I mean, David has, he's been here before, he knows every operator. I'm I'm somewhat surprised in that, um. Usually, he's very good about talking to me at times, so I'm sure he'll, I I must, I'm sure, but I would be surprised if he doesn't. If if you don't connect the, address.
So, um, so I mean, I I don't think that, yes, there, I mean. Generally, in all my letters that go out, I say to people, here's the, here's the application, here's my narrative, what it said, and please call me if you have any questions. And most people do, I mean, I get lots of calls from people, um, for these particular things, so, um, I, I mean, I don't like people to show up here, and I don't know they're gonna be here. So, for me, that's an unusual circumstance. Um, as far as the check goes, honestly, it's not, wasn't even on my radar to a certain extent, because that's not what we were looking to do for this particular variance hearing. Um, obviously, we all know the rules that if it's been there for more than three years, and unfortunately, it can be taken against it to a certain extent. Um, notwithstanding that, we can prove that it's not been there three years. If there's an issue with additional drainage in one sense or another with this neighbor, it's certainly something that we can talk to him about. But it sounds like he's already had drainage issues in the past, um, and my, my guess is that. You know, it could probably came from, because they have the top to begin with, and not necessarily from what we're asking for today. Um. And we can get a sign off from the engineer, uh, the town engineer that meets the drainage policy. Uh, and she's pretty good at, um, that if I'm when issues do not, um, as far as drainage policy goes. Uh, I don't think the neighbors had per se an issue with the, with the, with the stone wall itself, although I know that we've talked. Uh, I don't think the neighbors had per se an issue with the, with the, with the storm wall itself, although I know that we've talked about. You know, so.
I think it's not about the, as you're pitching though, you know, no one knows what's leading to another.
No, all I can say is that it's drain, the drainage policy, you have to prove to the engineer that in fact, whatever drainage you had going on with your property today, you can have more go off. Then, then that's, that's the rule. So I can't put a application in front of them that creates a more drainage problem than currently exists. I mean, you could have water pouring off your property. I could go build a whole new house and you still have water pouring off your property? That's not an issue for that particular applicant, so. Um, you know, I'm assuming that uh Maria is really, really good, uh, would have picked that up. She picked it up on lots of my other applications, so I would suspect that she did on this one as well. Max can tell me off.
Maybe it's the being, like, yeah, I mean, if you'd like, I would offer this stuff very right now, but there's like some screening I could do for you, because I know it might have been a little.
What, what are we talking?
We could talk offline, yeah. I would be happy to.
I think if me and Tommy figure out application. Since you know about two, we didn't have the time, if you wanted to continue this, of course, we entertain that, with these concerns could be addressed. I think the board, I think, I think the board has concerns about, about this project, so it might make sense to talk to me.
You want to see me another month? I mean, I'm happy to come back again.
I mean. We, we, we're trying to, if, if, you know, your neighbors are wanting to talk, if you want to talk, they want to talk to you about this, I think it's better. I think it may, I don't want to say on what day you're complying this, but.
These are two separate issues though.
Yeah, we're gonna try and work this offline, and if we don't, we come back, but we'll try and work this offline.
But I don't think so. I think the screening would be related in part maybe to drainage and drainage as well that it. Because the point, once, I want to put just a part of that, I want to add two things. So you, you just. The part of being a public carrier is that the neighbor didn't have to contact you, the council, when they read through that letter. They can raise the comments here, so I didn't. But well, it would be nice for you to notice as a lawyer, but they can show up, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record. Because not everybody has the means to create that out of advance, but just to clarify as far as author screening, I, I don't know if it. Mister Bowden did raise an issue that he's had an increase, it seems by him, of water affecting his driveway. Perhaps the screening would help not just with the new issue raised, which should perhaps even help divert some of that water. I don't know, but. I don't think it's separate. I think, you know, yes, there is a new issue that was raised, but I think perhaps screening might be related to. What is in front of us for the two variants it's requested.
So I think what we're saying is try to resolve this listically, you have three potential issues, one of your walls to close. Three of your patios to close, and three of your sheds to close. Yeah, the neighbor here showed up, you know, who would try to listen to everyone's concerns on all those issues.
Yeah.
Um, potentially you need at least two variants, maybe you need a third, but who knows, at least two.
Well, then with um, with your permission, I'd like to continue this here until the next month. Is there anything else that the board would like us to look at? In the interim, other than those issues before we come back again?
I think it may be helpful to get something from your engineer explaining why it don't have to be five feet and not ten feet. I don't know if other people on this board have a strong consideration about the five or ten feet. I doesn't think to me like the five or ten feet affects anyone. But I, I think that might be a question that's close, I think another question that came up, it's hard to understand is why. Was this patio the only mechanism of resolving the drainage? You know, I couldn't like a curtain drain or some other type of. Drainage implemented into a drywall or however they.
I think we got a bit of an answer there.
Yeah.
Yes, but the system would require coming to the variance, whereas I was understanding and believe. And perhaps more guided by the contractors that doing the patio would have avoided.
The system wouldn't have needed a variant, system didn't need a variant, so.
I, I think there was a belief that there would have required diminution or something else or making permit, I don't know.
They got modified and range.
They would have had to maybe have gone before one of the commissioners.
I don't think the commission, no, it's the drainage department.
Well, it seems to me that was what was expressed was the belief and thought was that would require that, but the value of what it required.
I have no idea, David, can you clarify? I don't understand why you'd have to go in front of a commission to put in a furnace drain here or some other term. I would, it would have just been a part of our other drainage, how, uh, what we went for to begin with, did go through all the drainage policy, if we wanted to um. Redirect it to a different drainage policy, we would have had to go through at least engineering again. I don't know if we would have needed another. I don't think we would have needed a permit, but you're right, we would have had to go through um, resemit our plan to Maria. Yeah, that's fair. So you would, so I think that.
Not necessarily, it just gives me another process.
It would take longer. Yes, that's correct.
If I can't understand correctly, then your contractor is the one who told you that you wouldn't need. To go back to town to install a patio, but you would if you installed some type of drainage?
So my understanding was is that if I had, so we came up with the issue of runoff underground, right? So runoff was taken care of with the wall, then there was groundwater, you know, by the pool. So we discussed option, underground drainage, gravel in the patio. They said, well, listen, since you're sitting on this regular lot, you know, high shaped, it's really, why don't we just square the pool up with the patio? Keep a little bit back from the wall, there's a separation for uh. Uh, between the wall and the patio and just square everything off, it'll take care of, if you put the, the gravel in it, it'll take care of all the soggyness in the issue.
Yeah, I understand, my question is, was it the contractor that advised you that?
He gave me the options and ultimately I made a decision.
Oh, so he didn't say that you didn't need to go back to town and install?
No, researched it and I looked it up on myself that I need to go back to town, do this whole underground drainage plan to get it approved and blah, blah, blah. And we were looking, you know, it was during COVID, things were held, you know, God knows how much longer things were going on, so he said, listen, you could either go both options. And I made a decision, hey, let's just put the patio in, not knowing about the setback requirements for the patio. I would have known about the setback requirements, so I was like, alright, let's slow down. Let's choose the right way and, you know, like I told you in the beginning of the meeting, it's, it's, it's kind of, it's on me. So, well, it's not the contractor's fault. He just gave me the options and I said, no, I want, I want to do this because if I have to go to plan review again. It might take months during COVID, if not a year.
And you need to research for the patio, you didn't see that, um.
I did not, no, I did not look to that.
It was pretty clear in general, if someone has proposed just a pool and they plan to expand their patio, they do need a whole current revision that's reviewed by every department. Because it does impact every department's.
Right. That's what I was told. It's gonna be, if I had to go through the whole process again, it would take probably six to twelve months and I had a pool that's what, you know, it's kind of like. It was.
So you decided to do a patio without coming back to town?
That's correct, because I didn't know that there was setback forefront, so I did, then I would have, it would have. I need at that point.
I thought Sarah just said was though, even if you just expanded the patio.
You still need engineering.
You still need engineering, all this other stuff.
You still need western review.
Yeah, still to be, oh, right, but I didn't know that, yeah.
But that sort of taken nine to twelve months, I did not know.
That already happened.
It's six, twelve weeks, just to be clear, when, when slow permit review time is to.
I figured.
Okay.
People were honestly, because everyone's at home, now pretty much it's faster.
So doing the drain would not, would not have been ten more than doing a patio if we did it with summer, right?
Correct, it was honestly, in theory, if they were just doing a current drain, it may have only gone to engineering. It probably would have gone through everyone now just because of the location, yeah, like the proximity to the wetlands and everything, but. The permit review itself would not have taken any less time when given those, it should have been the same process.
Okay, okay, okay.
David, Rich, there is two, one question again, and I'm sorry for repeating, to the left of the wall, what is that? I mean, that's another property, it's just hard to see.
Well, I'll use my.
Yeah. What's, yeah, right to the left, what?
That's right here?
Yes.
That I believe is the property line, right, David? That's the second, that's the second wall. Go back to the video, uh, the picture, so that one, no.
This is the property line here.
Okay.
And then this is the wall, let me know.
Okay.
Go to that picture.
And, and that person has not.
Same in the heart.
Now, I just want to confirm, they're good as a part.
They're uphill, so go to the, go to the picture.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for that, yeah.
So this wall, that's that wall, that was there, so these, there's two walls, there's one, two walls, this is the property line one, another wall.
Right.
That's up there, so this wall is kind of, it's, I did the reverse of kind of what this wall did.
Got it.
So this is the Luchette, this is the property line, and then this is mine, so it's kind of.
Right, no, that's what I thought I saw. And I know we may be repeating this, but I, what's, in my opinion, what would be helpful for us is that engineer just make some comment that. That there is or is not any material difference with water flow being at ten feet or five feet. If that engineer can specifically state that may, may help the committee in this time.
Understood, understood.
Okay, and I, I know Luke probably said that, but I just wanted.
Understood, so I basically, oh yeah, I had that, that was his first class.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, and if someone else in the commission has anything, it would like, can you just come next month?
Thank you. I don't want to think of breaks for that, the next one? So, next item on the meeting's bandup. Document number, land use C V nineteen dash six one two zero nine four seven F. Your favorite Marquinhos. That Al here for zoning board appeal, the county's payment, that Al, it seems to remember in a decision from the superior court. They have made ten from twenty-one, and it warrants the judge's decision, matter with the first pending zoning commission, or a consideration, or a resolution adopted on nine twenty-six twenty-three. It's got him in lawful action following his feet, planning and zoning commission of nine twenty-six twenty-three, just.
You know, for this room.
This is because of a P and B decision.
That is a letter from this farm, the P and B decision is in the file. But we seem to put a.
Christie, convert the goose, I find you sad. I, I, did I? Okay, Chris, you want to sit?
Sure.
Okay. So Christie is sitting, um, you were convinced on it?
Yes, I have been.
We have five, five people, Christie. Attorney Galderman, chair for the zoning board of appeals, town council. Do we want to take a moment to read this? Anyone, everyone in the audience, have a copy of this resolution, if not, I'll read it aloud. Amy doesn't have, does any, do we have extra copies?
I don't think you can read it.
Okay, I'm gonna read this aloud for. Resolution where, for the planning.
There's an extra here.
So we were manned in, um.
Oh, no, it's different.
A, a small procedural background, um, and Sarah or Attorney Galderman can correct me if I'm wrong. But the way that, um, this case comes about is there was enforcement action filed by Butter for Grace Farms. Town planner at that point in time denied the enforcement action.
No, that, look, this was in the open, you're going to sort of design.
Appeals and issues zoning permit, um, the Marquinhos is, um, challenger, issuance of the zoning permit, took an appeal, um. We then heard the appeal. We then rendered a decision. Decision was then appealed through the superior court. Superior court overturned our decision, remained it back with the instruction that, um, we then. At essentially, we, the, the judge essentially noted that we should have asked planning and zoning. To define what they meant by intensification or change of use in question six, uh, in section. Condition six, and then there's some there, uh, special per for Grace Farm. We then heard, we, we then had a hearing. We came up with a list of questions, there were seven questions, we sent them to planning and zoning, that would have been twenty twenty-one, I believe, it was a long time ago. The case then continued, planning and zoning recently rendered a decision. In the meantime. Um, a similar issue arose regarding the west barn property and whether or not. Um, I'm paraphrasing the issues here, but whether or not converting the interior space in it into, um, different usable spaces. Conducive to an intensive case, and that was a similar issue to the issue regarding the zoning permit that was appealed previously, so the two cases will. Have been sent to a hearing on the together.
Well, not quite, but this will be really here on the remand of the first case.
What about the issue on the west barn?
It's, it's a separate appeal, um, so this case needed to be resolved first, and. You know, it's, it, it's, it's kind of, let me just correct a couple of minor things, the judge didn't reverse. C V A, he simply remanded it back to this legal entity. Um, so a final decision hasn't been made yet, um, your decision from three years ago, it was three years ago. Uh, when this first came before you guys, none of you, except Luke, were on the, on the board at the time, so it puts you at a little bit of a disadvantage. Um, in the sense that there, there were several lights of hearings, um. In fact, the, the attorney who represented Grace Farms, at times now the land use judge, Al Harton. Uh, he replaced the judge who made the decision and remanded it back to you, so just to add a little bit of background to that. He will not hear anything on this case going forward, because the remand, whatever action you take is going to go back. To the court for then ultimate decision. It will be a different judge, of course, because he'll have a different interest, so. Um, and we know it's going to be Judge Budzik, who's another judge who does land use appeals, and so we'll see, you know, what happens, but. Um, hopefully you've all had a chance to read the decision that the court rendered, and you can see that the court kind of said. I don't know what condition six means, I don't think the court's thinking that, I don't what condition six means, how good is E V A actually know that? They need to consult with the P and Z, and see what the P and Z said about it, and then consider that. Um, in determining whether you think the decision you made three years ago. You individually, but the C D A made three years ago, um, was correct based on the P and Z's input or not. Um, now, you'll see behind me, there's a couple of attorneys, you know, here, Amy Surchin's represents the Marquinhos. Brian Smith represents Grace Farms. Yeah, I'm gonna leave it up to the board as to whether or not they want to hear anything from anybody on this, to me. Um, I personally would say it's, there's no reason to do that, because this is like a deliberation, like a business session. Um, where you've already rendered a decision, now you're looking at what the P and Z said, but I'm, you know, that's not my call. If you want to hear something from anybody, um, then you should do that. But there shouldn't be any new evidence put into the record, the record, this case is done. I mean, the record's been filed, the judge has written the record, there's no reason to have additional. Um, information or testimony in the record, somebody's just been made, so they can explain something, um, nowadays, it's necessary, that's a. Um, so, the, just a little more background, after the Z B A. Uh, after the remand, the Z B A, as Luke said, um, drafted some questions and sent them to the planning and zoning commission. Planning and zoning commission had a hearing. Three years ago, almost, a little less than that, on those issues. There was a, there was a, another neighbor who, um, a neighbor of Grace Farms. Who was not involved in the issue in the litigation, but sought to intervene in the litigation after the judge made his decision. And after the questions were asked, because his, his contention was that the P and Z would be rendering. Um, its opinion on issues that were broader than just the, the, not the west barn, that the operations center called it. Which was the subject of the original appeal, the operations. Um, Judge Berger, who was the judge, denied that. Uh, motion to intervene, and it went up, on appeal, it's actually. Uh, by the Supreme Court, Amy and Brian argued that case, I took no position, because. Um, my feeling was if there's another person involved, they're not, from the town's point of view, it doesn't really make any difference, and it seemed to me to be something to spend a town's money on. Judge is either gonna let an internet, or the court is either gonna let an internet, so. I took no position, ultimately, the court sustained Judge Berger's decision, and they weren't, they were not allowed to interview. And this is relevant, because that's one of the reasons it took so long to get from there to here, it's three years, all that stuff happened in the interim. And so that's one of the reasons it, it took a while to come back to give it. Another reason frankly, is it was a lot of other stuff on everybody's plate and agenda, and so it took a while for this to get to the P and Z. Not for Amy's lack of trying, she wrote several letters to me saying, can we get this going? Well, it happened when it happened, so the P and Z met last month and rendered their kind of opinion in the form of a resolution. And they've sent it back now to you, and what you're going to do is decide if that decision of the planning zoning permission effectively is the decision you made three years ago, if it's consistent with the decision you made three years ago, which was to deny the appeal that the Marquinhos took. And to sustain the action of the, of the then zoning enforcement, so you had three days to live. It goes back before we, kind of the zoning program was issued.
My view, this is slightly different than yours, I think that our role is to not necessitate birth to what P and Z believes, if our decision was right or wrong, I believe our role is to get the definition of intensification, change of use to them, and then apply that against the fact we've already heard.
Okay, well.
Like from three years, from whenever we heard of that, but I, I, I think that for the remand was, was that if the big hole was that, like the court noted, was that we should have asked P and Z ahead of time what intensification or change of use meant, and we didn't do that, and that's why we sent those questions back.
Yeah.
You didn't send questions back to.
Court said they didn't know how to.
Yeah, it was improper, and proper, both the two boards spoke to each other. So that's what the court did, so we sent the questions back, but I don't think that, I think our role, and you can correct me if there's disagreement here. I believe our role is to apply that definition, that explanation regarding those terms to the facts that we heard and what the people who are here three years ago, you know, they all listen to the transcript, they all listen to the boarding, or the transcript, I think they are prized of the facts, and I think that's our role, I don't think we should just defer that the P and Z set or didn't consist with what they said, I don't think our job is to understand, to do, I think we still have an obligation to look at what these ambiguous terms meant. And say, our belief is that applying the definitions that P and Z, or the explanation that P and Z gave us of those terms, if we still believe that our decision of holding the zoning permit was correct. So my say, slightly different, but I don't want to give just complete deference to that. I don't believe, and again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we should hear additional facts, tonight, I believe the record's closed on this. I don't believe that was part of the court instruction to rehear the case or anything, we're not giving it a second try. I guess as an attorney, I'm more open to that, if the attorneys wanted, if anyone's in front of this board, I would always say, you know, let them talk. We're not, again, we're not gonna rehear facts, but if someone believes what we're saying is wrong, I'd be open to hearing that, so maybe perhaps we are wrong, and we could consider that, I don't know, both sides have counsel, I don't know if counsel has comments on this, but this is, if they do, I would be open to that. As long as this doesn't become a rehearing of the facts, or the fact that I think that's closed. And if other people want to talk, I'm against to that, just.
Jessica, I would say that if the council wanted to speak only to the decision and what they believe with the remands, our view, it should be.
That makes sense.
Exactly agree. No new evidence, I agree, and that was what was part of the decision. Like Luke, I am also an attorney registered in state of New York and New York, New York and Connecticut. So I agree with the interim case, I agree with right now, and I agree that I think the court was looking for us to actually substantiate more specifically as the zoning board of appeals, why you're denying the appeal. And but recognizing that we did need some advice and input from the zoning, I mean zoning commission, so what these board really didn't have to use, what that did.
I'm not agreeing completely with Jessica's summary of that. So if someone, and if one of the counselors here thinks that has comments regarding usually how we're looking at this, of course, we're open that, because I want to make sure we're considering everyone's viewpoints on it, but that's how, how I think this board, or is this seeing our role right now? It's gonna be very unique fact pattern, but you, either you see it differently. I don't want to change what we're doing, but welcome to listen.
So is this, this resolution, this really was adopted in twenty twenty one?
No.
This was last month, yeah.
Adopted last month, it was discussed in twenty twenty.
I see.
I think before we proceed too, once we go through this little bit background, I'm gonna read this in the record, I want to make sure everyone on the screen also has this to just being given out tonight, I want to make sure it's accessible to everybody. I'm sure they can all download a copy of it, or wherever that gets put, does this go online? Okay, is it already online? For those of you on the computer, we can't hear you talking tonight, but on the P and Z website. Yes, Amy.
I'm gonna take those, consulting, please, Don, I'm not giving.
Okay. If everyone can state their names.
Amy Sutches, they're representing David Marquinhos and Jennifer Holland. Let me address the procedural issue first, and frankly, I disagree with you about the scope of the facts and what you can hear for two reasons, one, I think the plain language of the court's ruling, which specifically talks about the fact that the board was incorrectly advised that use was not relevant, therefore didn't decide it. And then the court continues to say the use of the building at issue is an explicit special permit, the dog has no authority to ignore the special permit, which prescribes the use, and then goes on to say, one, the referral back to you and for consultation with the commission, and concludes with the second to last sentence, it's anticipated that the issue will be referred to the commission, meaning planning and zoning commission, which will address the question of the application of the conditions of the two thousand seventeen special permit, and return the matter to the board for further consideration in light of the commission's determinations. So the court's envisioning that you are having further consideration. And my point that relates to the issue that's raised in Attorney Smith's letter that I think was submitted this afternoon, was that, you know, somehow we're getting what we want, which was input from P and Z, but now we're not happy with the result, the important difference is that had this actually been referred to P and Z, or frankly, in our legal opinion, should have gone to P and Z before the zoning permit, all of this information would have come in and should come in for that reason. That in order to understand the use and the issues that are being presented, now P and Z has weighed in, I think it's important for you, again, sitting in a fact finder de novo review of what happened with zoning permit, that you understand all of the relevant facts, and frankly, why P and Z's decision is wrong. And what they're overlooking in that interpretation, just like we would have been able to present to you, had it gone to P and Z in the first place. I think that's the important procedural reason why I think the evidence that we submitted in our letter last week is, is relevant to your consideration tonight.
Is that in the title, or can I not file, because it was submitted out the first year?
Attorney Sutches, I'm, it was posted on the website.
But in the record already then.
Also, I mean, there's no new record, it was posted on the website for all the review, but I don't believe we have a new record.
I don't think we should have a new record, I don't think there should be any new evidence presented to the ZVA. Amy and I have disagreed on a lot of things on this case, so admittedly. But this remand, in my mind, was specifically made so that the ZVA had benefited of some thinking from the, from the P and Z. Probably irrelevant if Amy or anybody else speaks to P and Z's comment, probably not. They made their decision, they made their comments, they're the ones that put the conditions on the special permit. So making a claim that those decisions are somehow wrong, in my opinion, and again, here the board. In my opinion, that goes way beyond the scope of the, of the reading, and isn't an appropriate thing for anybody to argue at this point. This is not a new case. The de novo word that Amy used goes back to the beginning, not this, this is not a good de novo here, the de novo here.
So I, I agree with that generally in principle. But as a board, aren't we supposed to consider all the evidence we're aware of, even if it's not part of the record, I thought that the board considers, you know, what, what knowledge you have.
Well, it's a record, this is a recorded appeal, so the only thing that a court has to look at when it's reviewing whether or not it, it act sustains or dismisses or determines whether an appeal is what in the record. And my feeling is the record is closed, I think that old can of worms gets opened up if you open up the record, to something that wasn't imminent, it's began enough to, at that point in time, a new appeal, not a a re, a hearing, I believe, so. It's, and again, I mean, I advise you, Amy's not her client, she heard this. So I'm trying to advise the board on what I think the appropriate actions.
Yeah, Brian Smith of Representatives Farm Foundation, and I think the situation here is been complicated needlessly by Attorney Sutches, because it remand is just that, it's instructions by the court and what the Superior Court has done, it, it has not reached the final decision yet, that's why it's a remand, it goes back for more information gathering. And it specified exactly what it wanted those zoning board of appeals to obtain for that information, which is please ask the planning and zoning commission what it thinks it meant, or what it meant by condition six on what intensification of a use is, that's the only thing that was really being asked here. And the planning and zoning commission, with a little interlude to the connective court, eventually said that, you know, this resolution, now this zoning board of appeals can look at this resolution, and it could accept it or reject it, do whatever it wants to, it needs to now consider it. And it considers this, and then report back, and make its, you know, report back to the, we as a party, and then go back to the court. And we, we make arguments to the court about whatever it meant. But it's really for you to decide, this is what the planning and zoning commission says. Do you agree with it, or do you not agree with it on your own, based on the record you already have, not a new record, that would be created by new expert evidence that no, no one got permission from the court to clarify, say, we want new expert evidence, that's a whole, as attorney knows, that's a whole kind of, you didn't know enough to be allowed new evidence in here. So, so we, of course, happen to agree with planning and zoning mission. And they were the authors of condition number six, so I don't know who else would be that set to interpret, except the authors themselves. But that's for you to decide, it's not for us to decide, or to provide additional new evidence of, of why they're either right or wrong.
So we're going to build them procedurally. We have to decide, I think, on that issue of what we're not to allow additional evidence or not. Factual evidence, do we vote on that as a board, or how do we?
I would say if you're considering that, then you should vote out if it's a board. I recommend against it, but again, that's.
Yeah, I. I'm someone who's made the most, and I would make it, I knew that we do not consider factual evidence. And I'd just like to vote on the record, if people vote on that, so.
May I ask one procedural clarification for the record, when you mean new evidence, what exactly are you talking about, I've submitted materials, and Attorney Smith submitted the letter this afternoon. So I would like just the record to be clear, what, what you are accepting and not accepting.
I will move that you're not accepting anything that is newly submitted for this hearing, it is going to be reviewed based on what was presented to this board when we first heard this matter, and for the record, I was an alternate when this was on, so this is not new matter for me, and I did re-listen to everything. So that would be my vision, that we are only going to be reviewing, really in front of us here, the resolution from the commission, which was requested through the remand by the third. And then taking this and applying it through the G of Hula that was originally presented to the zoning board of appeals. And the evidence that was originally presented at that time in twenty nineteen. We will then decide if we now have legal us with looking back for the commission to determine how we fit that book, apply this new dollar and resolution to point six on the second plan, which is about the intensification.
Since you, since you got like that second justice's motion, and I had listened to all the transcripts while I was not on the board at that point, I feel like it probably was in what was presented, you know, over the course of several meetings. On.
I'm a little bit modified, I'm a little bit. I think it's just too much definitely. I think it could be simple, I think that I would move that the hearing was closed previously, gone to appeal, directed before the court. That we do not consider any factual evidence or additional submissions from the parties after, after the day we closed the original hearing, and that the additional evidence that we hear is only is only the the information that the court ran down for us to hear, which is what does the board mean that there should be no change of use or intensification to use in this court?
I think we're very specific. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that. So that's how we're gonna address it, I'll read this, and then we'll.
We'll take a work.
Okay, so. Christie.
I, I agree.
Rich character.
I agree, it's rich character.
Absolutely favorite.
Carmen's favor.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I'll, I'll read this. Those of you who may, may not have it in front of you right now. Resolution where the commission met on September twentieth, twenty twenty one, to discuss an upper guidance from the new king zoning board of appeals. In response to the direction of Judge Berger's remand order in the case of David Marquinhos, that Al versus zoning board of appeals, Lieutenant Kreenan. L and D, CJ nineteen six one two zero nine four hyphen S, and whereas the purpose of the discussion was to determine whether the commission agreed with the ZVA's decision, the activities conducted by Grace Farms Foundation at the West Farm Operations Center violate the terms of the special permit by virtue of creating intent.
Did not violate.
That's did not violate, is what it should say.
It says that.
Must have a prior, did not violate.
Did not violate. Where, I'll, I'll restart that second paragraph, because I'm being instructed as forced to read. Where, so you have a matter number, I mean, a document number on the bottom of your something.
I think our.
Well, should we have the current certificate? Whereas the purpose of the discussion was to determine whether the commission agreed with the ZVA's decision that the activities conducted by Grace Farms Foundation at the West Farm and at the Operations Center did not violate the terms of the special permit by virtue of creating an intensification of use, and whereas the commission heard arguments and received information from attorney for the neighbors. whereas the commission heard arguments and received information from attorney representing the neighbors, Marquado's head, Al, and Grace Farms Foundation and the town attorney. And whereas this resolution was delayed because other neighbors of Grace Farms Foundation sought intervene in the case referenced above, which the matter was ultimately decided by the Connecticut Supreme Court with the decision that they not permit the other neighbors intervene. Now therefore, it is resolved. The commission agrees with the finding and interpretation of the ZBA that the board's activities are within the perimeters of the special permit. And a building permit and zoning permit were properly issued for such activities. Second, the commission finds that civil activities are appropriate and within the scope of the special permit. Provided that such activity do not expand the footprint of any approved building or require an increase in the number of approved parking spaces set forth in the special permit. Third, the commission finds that changes in location of approved activities that do not increase the size of any building do not require additional parking and that do not change the nature of the group activities ever made under the special permit. That, the end of the resolution, I think. My first comment is that we sent them seven questions and I don't believe this is responsive to the seven questions. It's everyone's view, but this is not addressed, I mean, for seven questions. I feel like they are asking us to defer to them and just say it's consistent with it. Maybe your decision is consistent with it, but I feel that our, our my role, each person, I guess, their role differently, to apply the facts on the record that you had before to the to what number six meant. And then I would have found it helpful if they addressed our, our, our questions that we never had a seventh question we gave them and said if they had any additional information, maybe this would fall under number seven. But I think the court was clear before that we really need to support our decision here. And I would appreciate that if, if, if an effort was made to address the questions presented.
Well, I can respond that the question was given to the P and Z, obviously, and then they went off, kind of had their own discussion, which you've all probably watched that hearing. Where the remand was discussed with the planning and zoning, I don't know if everybody was better or not, but they related it. So they read the court's decision, I think, it's been telling them to, you know, give you whatever advice that you thought was helpful to you in terms of the supporting condition number six, even though it has a reference condition number six under the rule. So I think that this is basically what the commission said and then this resolution was I talked about it the last meeting of the P and Z and they all, well, only four people on the P and Z voted on this simply because it would be only for what we had taken part in the in the process previously. So three of the members who were there that, the last ones abstained and but they had a core minutes, it was appropriate, they discussed this. They may not have the record and answered the, the questions, but I get that now the board's determination is to, to give the board information it needs. Or, you know, to to make a finding that its decision from three years ago was, was correct and if P and Z supports that decision or not, that's sort of what you're, in my view, what you're doing in this.
I mean, I think this is conclusive here, though. They're reaching a conclusion here that's consistent. They're not answering the questions and our role to
I'm saying it's another intensification, I think it's not an intense confusion.
Right, I, I, this is Jessica Carter. I, they were providing us the resolution of, I believe, what they feel are the three main things to evaluate to determine if there is an intensity which might use as outlined in this permanent property. The three things I think are actually expressed in the resolution. In the second whereas clause, they do address the fact by virtue of creation of a statement that that's the framework of what they're trying to identify. Even if they don't match point six in the special permit or the six conditions expressly. And I think it is outlined in the three resolutions, I would say, more so than the second and third point. That the three things that they think are the categories of what would be sort of the framework for whether something was an intensive fusion of news or not for the greater property would be, one, no expansion of existing physical spaces. Two, no expansion of what was the originally approved parking spaces and three, the name of the use, which they did go into a little bit more specifically in the hearing and their discussion for this meeting, where they described that there are three originally approved uses of the property for religion or other, I have other words for them, not drawing them right now from memory. And that those who sort of threw the wrong categories approved types of categories of use. So I think for us, it always turned on, you know, how are we going to interpret that? I think a lot of us did focus more on the parking, the number of parking spaces, and we all could see within, those of us who were here at the time, that within the special permit, there was never any restriction specified in the special permit. That's how many employees they could have. And so I think it just did come back to us basically saying, no, we don't think the special permit and execution, intensification of the use was ever meant to be in some sort of fixed number of employees. So that's why I read the resolution based on what I read for
I mean, possibly that in here was what I believe is conclusive. They're applying definition to the fact and I don't believe it's because they think here it's consistent with the special permit. If you don't agree with your, it's consistent.
Rich character, tip question, sorry. Now, I read everything, listened, read, not an attorney, but you know, I now, but, I mean, the way I, I, I see this is that, one, the P and Z commission are sort of the ruling body. They are the author of the rule and they came up with the special permit with the conditions, sorry, the ninety-nine R hundred conditions that was referenced. I mean, they are the ones that wrote the law, so to speak. Is that correct?
They drafted it.
They drafted it.
They drafted it, voted to approve that resolution with those.
With those conditions, okay. We, we hear of and read about a lot of attorneys try to interpret the intent of Congress or any ruling body of what the law actually meant, and that is debated in courtrooms. But, but that's my opinion, what the intent was and the judge had to decide. Okay, what happened here was that we have the benefit of all this litigation or, and, and back and forth and documents which went back to the ruling body or the draft of the permit. And the drafts of, of, the drafter of the law, so to speak, or the permit. And they had the opportunity to review both parties. And then they met as a group, as we heard, and decided what their intent was and reconfirmed what their rule and permits were and what their intent was. We had that benefit. So they, in my opinion, confirmed their intent and put it forth in the resolution as was pointed out. I mean, that's my one view only, I had a couple of views, but is that logical in your opinions?
Yeah, I, I did agree with that. I think that's an accurate way to put it. I think the difference being though is that our role to apply special permit, the fact with the, with their guidance of what they meant by that term. It's not their job to apply it to the facts as I feel it being done here. I feel that we, we heard the fact, we applied the fact. We obviously have the insight, they believe this is consistent, but I don't think we can refer to them and say it's consistent. I believe we need to look at the questions we had asked three years ago now. And then, and then based on the answers they give us, confirm or I guess reverse our prior decisions that the court will, will then hear.
So I, I, Rich character, I would have liked to see them address our questions specifically, but I think they felt that a resolution laying it out was probably the best way to go. Because it's a resolution that's voted on and agreed and they resolved something instead of addressing our questions, but I wish they would have with the resolution, but they didn't and maybe we could ask them to go back and do that. But I still come back to a basic concept that they are the ones, they're Congress, they wrote the rule. And they had a chance to now apply and on a sort of a, a, a decision that is interpreting their own rule that they wrote. And they, we have the benefit of their intent because they've confirmed what their intent is. We don't write the rules. They write the rules.
I, I agree with that. I would, I would, my feeling would be I would be more comfortable if we remanded this back. We obviously know where the line ran back and ask them to try their dress or
Well, I, I don't like sharing this.
I agree. I think we've done what was asked from by the board in the remand, which was simply what they should have basically, we were supposed to have basically, they've been remanded to give guidance or information on the proposed construction and application conditions. I believe they feel they have done that with the resolution. They don't think they have to be passed with anything more than this they've already done. Would it have been nice if they had done what we had asked you in answering those? Sure, I think they've done what the court has asked with the, the direction of the reading less.
I agree with, with Jessica and, and with, with Mrs. Christine Warner, with Rich's interpretation that you know, they've outlined on what they intended when they wrote the rules. They've given us specific areas that they would have focused on in, in interpreting those rules. And from there, we can apply that to the facts that we already have. And I think what we need to do is provide some clarification on how we came to our decision, which was, you know, very well vetted and discussed a few years ago.
I think for me, as someone who sat in twenty nineteen, you know, through those meetings, this does give me the framework that I felt I would have needed or wanted from P and Z about the special term or the intensification uses. And I stand by our decision that I don't think we should have approved appeal. I think we were right to have denied the appeal because I do not feel that changing the interior square footage of that space repurposing some of what was originally described as being, you know, I think a security building for existing uses and functions and stuff were not an intensification of the use when there was no expansion of those physical spaces, no build out, no other coverage added, so to speak, to use our terminology, when they didn't have to expand any of the approved parking spaces. And they didn't change the function or nature of the use of the property as it was originally identified in the special permit. So at least that's where I stand. And, and believe that we were right to have taken the action we did as the zoning board of appeals.
I'd like to add that I agree with Jessica Rich and Christie. And while I was not a voting member of the board at that time, I do agree with the decision that was made after listening to all of the information that was provided. I have to say that, you know, I feel that some of the questions in regard to, you know, intensifications seem to be, you know, this underlying unknown throughout the discussions that I feel that that is answered in the resolution that we did get from P and Z and from what I'm seeing, and maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, but I see more of what the court is coming back saying is that, you know, you haven't, we, the ZBA haven't provided you know, a detailed reason as to why the decision was made. And I feel that that's what we're here to do today. And I feel that we have enough information in front of us to make that decision or provide that information.
Mr. Chairman, if I could be heard on one procedural issue, given the section.
I don't think we're any executive section. Well, yes, that's a good question. So there's obviously a disagreement procedurally.
My, my question is simply, there has been a lot of discussion about what people heard. I would like it stated on the record that people have watched or listened to the P and Z deliberation, that those people identified that on the record. That, that there was a motion made earlier that no new evidence was being taken. And now there is questions and references to what went on during the P and Z hearing. So I'd like it clear on the record as to which members
I, I
participated or viewed the P and Z discussion that led to the resolution.
And, and my comment, Rich character, my comment is what's most important here is this resolution. I, I think what was said, I'm more than happy, but in my opinion, I don't think those discussions were relevant because it led to the resolution. And what I'm pointing my focus on is what was resolved. Like at the end of a board meeting, at the end of Congress deliberating and voting, this, this is the rule that they, they resolved something and this is all we should go by.
And Mr. Chairman, to be clear, I am not asking about substance. I'm asking simply procedurally that if anyone on the board watched the P and Z deliberations or discussion from last week's meeting or from the September twenty one discussion, I would like that noted on the record.
Sarah is the only thing that you linked to for this preparation on the agenda tonight was from this recent week.
I believe I, so I don't believe I, I shouldn't send anyone any information about P and Z's meeting from this year. You know, last month, I believe I provided the link for the twenty twenty one discussion. He said that that was an optional video.
But Karen, I don't remember. I, I don't see a reason to address it, quite yet. I don't, I don't.
What's the point?
I, I'm asking because there is a discussion about what was represented and what P and Z's discussion was. That's, that's not the, in there, there are
when we heard this in twenty twenty one, there was a discussion about whether or not I knew that here, whether or not people should can attend the P and Z hearing or not. And a decision was made at that time that it's up to individual members, whether or not they want to attend the P and Z hearings or not, but they're not gonna, but the board is not gonna have representatives at the hearings, but of course, as individuals, they can attend what they want. I, I don't, I, I'm so, I'm gonna deny your motion.
It, Mr. Chairman, it's not a, it's not a motion. I'm asking you
Okay.
For the record, that is, that, that it be noted, and if you're telling me you are not, you are not having anyone identifying on the record what materials they used to rely in reaching their decision. Then that's fine, but I just wanted to clear on the record that that's what I'm asking for. What commission, what the board members are reviewing in reaching their decision.
I assume everybody on the board could say that they're looking at the resolution that
Yes.
And, and I, I knew that the material that Sarah sent Yeah, whatever, whatever material Sarah sent, don't let's send around.
I care for this, we kind of read the evidence.
No, no, I, I am not. Let me, Mr. Chairman, if I could be heard on record. This, this implicates my client's fundamental fairness rights and due process rights. And yes, and you can speak to the issue too. I have no problem with that. I'm happy to deliver from the younger midwife too. But there was a motion, there was a motion, there was a motion ready to what happened in twenty twenty three.
I was looking through, you have public materials linked. The only thing on her transcript was from the P and Z is from fifty nine twenty one.
And that's, that is precisely what I'm asking. I am asking
You asked shout last week. I said, I said last week.
I said, well, I was, I was not looking at that. I said, I said, I asked for both. My clients, you have just made a motion unanimously that no new information would be considered. And my point that I would like clear on the record is that there are board members who in fact reviewed the tape, audio or otherwise, of the P and Z's twenty twenty one decision. And the discussion from last week that reached the motion, I would like that noted on record. It's simply a question of, did you listen to the twenty twenty one transcript or read it or video? And the twenty twenty three, that's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for your substance of the opinion of it. I'm just trying to make
I, I think that's the only scope of our voice, my answer to that question. I think that's something you noted in the record. I'm sure I could go back up to the field. It can be addressed. It's the judge there who's, that information that, that, that the town, the town planner has something around for people to review is part of the
Yeah, if, if Rich carried you, that opens up every single person coming in front of this board setting up, setting a precedent that I have to answer exactly what materials I've reviewed in every single case going forward or in the past to any person coming up for a variance. And we don't want to be in that position to have to address that.
I don't think it's creating a precedent, I, I, but I, I do believe that everything that Sarah sent is
I think all of us can say with confidence, we haven't actually heard any new evidence. That wasn't presented before.
I'm not even gonna say that. I think it's a discussion.
There was a sudden discussion about the resolution done by the board. We're looking at the resolution in front of us. And I think all of us are looking at this. I honestly, I'm interpreting the resolution the way it's written in front of me. Based on how I think this is categorizing it. I don't care what P and Z said about it, frankly, because it's our job to interpret. How this resolution imposes our decision and what we've heard in twenty nineteen. And I don't disagree. So I think you can trust that ethically with number of. Twos out here, we're gonna answer it the way we feel we were asked to by the.
So, um. We appreciate your um passion and advocacy for your mind. Um. But I think we're gonna limit this to what we have before. Tonight, which is this resolution before us and the information that we heard at the prior hearings. Um. Okay, so I I the big question that I had. Is. Um. To proceed whether or not we remain as back to P and Z to answer the questions or not. Um, I I'd like, I mean, that sounds like that's not gonna happen, but I'd like to. Vote on that first. I don't know if I'm gonna even second my motion on that. But um I think before we go on to deliberate on this. All right. I'd move that I'll make a motion that we ran this to P and Z for P and Z to um. Answer the seven questions that we previously sent them.
Do you feel that's relevant to your decision making power? Or imperfectly than of what the court has.
I do.
In what way? Can you reiterate?
Because I feel that I feel like these.
You don't have the information.
Right, right.
Can you identify? Because I don't think any of us can second your motion without knowing more deeply what it is you feel isn't present. I don't, I don't wanna not consider what your concerns are. I just don't know what they are.
So question six, I mean, uh, condition six said there should be no material change of the approved use or intensification of any use. And that's the subject that I thought I'd hear. My first question would be. Um, again, I'm just reading from the question that we voted on sending them to board before. Um, question, so um, the question that we brought on sending before is what constitutes a material change of the approved use. Regarding the special permit and more particularly the operation center. I think knowing what is a material change. Would be helpful. Um. Not just that they don't believe this is a material change, but what is a material change? What constitutes an intensification of any use and will could be the operation center here they. They're saying that they don't believe that there is an intensification of use. But again, that's the conclusion. I want to know what what. Type of conduct do they think is an intensification of any use? The second question that we sent them was what uses concrete and operations center of security and other administrative operations of the property. As opposed to the applicant in general, and such terms are used in condition thirty. There's no reference here to condition thirty or um operation of the property. As opposed to the applicant in general. I don't even see where they they may attempt to address that question. Um, the next question we asked them before was, does the addition of additional interior offices at the operation kind of rooms at the west barn. Constitute an intensification of use? Even if there is not a material change in the type of use. Um, again, they didn't address whether or not there's a change in the type of use. I think they. They view it that um what print state is saying, the apartment state is saying is not intensification, but I believe they only addressed part of that question. Um, does the construction that allows an increase in the number of employees increase much constitution and intensification of use? Or interior construction that increases activity space of the west barn constitute an intensification of use or material change of use? I don't believe they fully addressed that.
Well, I don't know if they just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but like, I think that the vast rigness of the resolution. It doesn't mean they haven't considered what these questions were put to them. They think they tried to collate them into something that was more synthesized. Because also they don't want to have to be. Interpreting feeling so specific when this is an appeal up to us to decide. So I think they really wanted to try to. Provide some synergy and synthesize a response in the resolution to all the questions. And provided the feedback, which I at least the way I.
I mean, perhaps that was their intent, but I feel like it's not their intention to reach conclusion for for.
I don't think they are.
Let me finish, Jessica, that's gonna answer my question. So I'm gonna finish. The fifth question we sent them. Was there grassy operations center as employee count and use at the time you were going on term was issued. Consistent with what P and Z used when the special permit was granted. Um. Maybe they kind of addressed it, but again, we're we're having to hypothesize here, and the court told us we shouldn't have talked about it. Ask them our questions. I mean, maybe. And here they address another third parking, and maybe that's the answer. And then in six, um, was employee count something that they wanted controlled through parking count or through what other conditions in the special permit? Or was it through the number and size of events or any partner restrictions and events restrictions? Um, so. I stopped and asked those questions. I thought those questions would be helpful for us to understand it. I think some of them may address other ones. Maybe they didn't deem more important for them to reach reach their conclusion, but um.
They posed of us just to get guidance or information. On the proposed construction application can differ from six. And they were also. Said such a ring man to the board require the commission on purpose and meaning of the language of condition six. Relate conditions with proper use of the name. I don't think the court put on P and Z any specific requirement. For this reason, to answer any identical, like any identified or very specific language questions we posed them. Just that they were supposed to look to basically the language of condition six.
The court, the decision put any burden on the P and Z, the the court put the burden on us. To ask P and Z the questions that we didn't ask there to answer number six.
So look and show me there. It said they had to answer our.
It doesn't say I answered to the question, but they said that we need more feedback. And interpretation on what these conditions mean. We then. As a board, put together the questions that we felt that we needed. Information on in order to interpret what what these questions were. And that's why, yeah, that's why three years ago, we asked these questions. I felt that we needed, we felt that we needed.
I believe Rich and I were both part of twenty twenty one four.
We needed.
And I feel I have the adequate information in front of me. Um, I don't feel I need. To have anything more than this resolution for me to then. Consider how this resolution would apply to those specific questions or any other questions I might have in my mind to justify.
And why say I wanted to focus on that?
I don't remember if I was present or not, but I do. Know that I appreciate what you're saying. Anything that was asked. But I can't read it. I don't know that you had the minutes there to show which seated members were.
I think I have the minutes. I don't kind of have them in front of me right now, but you know, it's gonna be in this. Whoever was there. But um, it it sounds like you all maybe just felt on a need more clarification.
Correct, that's what I'm in motion for. And maybe people don't think, maybe people's views changed from when we sent it back three years ago. But I I my view has, and I would find answering these questions to be the last to do and helpful in me determining what's an intensification of use or change of use. What's a material intensification of use or change of use?
Procedurally, do our town council, what happens if no one is going to second this motion?
Well, the motion that seconded that is the top control.
Right. Is anyone going to second the motion? No. No.
Okay. So, um. I guess the next step is here is. We'll be based on the facts people heard before, um. Elaborating or enumerating why they believe that. Condition number six and condition number um condition six in which it says, um. There should be no material change of the approved use or intensification of any use unless specifically authorized here and. And um. What uses concrete and operations center of security and other administrative operations of the property as opposed to the applicant as used in condition thirty. Um, I guess someone could move to um. Discuss how they believe the factual record. In light of this additional guidance provided by P and Z. Um, reports that there was no material change of use, change of the approved use. Or intensification of any use in that um. That the building's being used. Consistent with um operations center for security and other administrative operations of the property.
Well, I'm happy to reiterate what I said before. I know it was a question in my mind when I answered. What, oh, in in totality, what was intended by intensification of use or not having any intensification of use? I assumed, and I think there is some of that coming from the commission, that part of that went to the influx of. People, visitors to the property. And that in not expanding any of the physical parking space that that meeting has been addressed. So that is definitely. In the mind of P and Z with crafting and town with crafting the special permit. Um, that. There would be really a sort of a cap on it, how many people, both personnel and visitors can be parking. On the property. I think they also, you know, it's been pretty actively addressed that. There is always going to be some level, certainly with the pandemic, you know, which we didn't foresee in twenty nineteen. You're gonna have fluctuating nature of use with any. Non-residential use, even a residential use, you will have fluctuation of use. Um, and I think. The fact that this permit was originally approved for. Sort of various categories of use, um, you know, the religious aspect, some um non-for-profit type of activities. Uh, that as long as it wasn't going above and beyond that with some type of new type of expansion of that. That that's really also. Something we should take into consideration as to an intensification of use or not. And then I think not building out anything beyond what had been planned for the physical spaces. So. There hadn't been, to my knowledge, a new building constructed or um a new L. You know, addition to property. And I think that is also something that was meant to be included. In interpretations, the intensification of use in the special permit for the benefit of other neighbors, right? So that there wouldn't be, if you continue to build out from property, obviously that would have. Opportunities to have bigger mess and other things that would then burn the neighbors. And so that is. I think what has been kind of the feedback provided to us here and consistent with my thoughts. I did not think there was ever meant to be. An interpretation that they were only ever supposed to have however many people working there. That I just didn't see how that was meant to be an intensification use because employee numbers always sort of come down anyway.
Okay, Rich Carrington, I agree with that, and I think that as a kid to. Downtown New Genie. I'm the developer. I built a six thousand square foot commercial property that houses retail. And I have to. Provide a certain number of parking spaces for my square footage, right? That's the law. And I was given my permit to do that. Some time goes by, tenant moves out. And new tenant moves in, they. Put in whatever they need to put in in that allowable square footage. They can hire as many employees as they see fit, but by by the law, they change the configuration of the business. Maybe they divide it to store into two. There's two separate tenants now, but did the same square footage. But I still have my same retail square footage property and my allocated parking spot. So once I received the permit for the square footage and the applicable parking. And I got permission to do a retail to door. I should be entitled to do whatever I want as long as as the commission said I didn't increase the square footage of the footprint. Um, and I didn't change the nature of 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 retail versus residential, you know, they're doing what they got the special permit to do. I mean, in my simplified interpretation, the head is what you told me.
Anyone else? Any comments?
I I, this is Christie Bonner. I agree with how Jessica's interpreting it. I have never thought about analogy. It's an excellent analogy and it 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 does. It does communicate the point that they make here, but. You know, you're not intensifying, you're repurposing within the the boundaries of the original permit. I agree with what Spencer's got already.
I agree also with what you're saying.
So I think the first question that has to be, it's a two-pronged question, I guess. That'd be addressed, um. What is the, we have to find there is no material change of the approved use? So Jessica, what I I guess I think it's starting from, we have to find what. Who we believe. Constitutes a material change of the approved use and then, and you know, and then obviously we have the finding. And I'm obviously, but I guess there'll be then be a decision based on whether or not that finding is is. Consistent with the definition that you believe the board will use. P and Z has, so I don't know if it would be. Easiest for it to fit into parks and the board on on parks or just have one. Resolution, I mean, one one motion, but I think it. Might be easier to make sure that the courts have needed to. Best by the ground part decision. If we broke it down into the prongs, to what material changes approved use, then why um people believe that is or is not a material change or a group use. Um.
Mr. Chairman, subsequently, are we? You said no new evidence. Are you hearing testimony from anyone who wants to speak? Any of the attorneys on the old evidence?
On the what?
On evidence that was reported.
No, the evidence is closed.
Right.
The fact, the fact that this law, so we have, we right, I feel that it's our decision to um. Would would you consider the facts that they were presented to us, not just to the superior court with the. Our scope of review being limited to an application. Of the law or the law being, you know, the decision of the P and Z on that particular question. With the facts that are before the court and I was then going back up to the court. I I don't believe the court is going to be hearing your evidence, and I don't believe. Um. It was issued to us for that point, and we voted before that we're not gonna consider.
I'm not asking about new evidence. I'm asking about something that was submitted to you in two thousand nineteen.
You wouldn't be able to do that in a deliberation after a public hearing. And that's essentially what this is.
The reason I'm asking for the clarification was because when we first came up, there was a discussion that. Would be addressed to the procedural questions. And then there was. A comment that there would be. That we weren't going to discuss new evidence.
I thought by the new evidence that it includes that, that includes elaborating on.
And if that's, and if that's the answer, that's fine. I just wanted to make it clear that that was the position.
Um. Correct, um, that was my interpretation of all that the the evidence section of this meeting is closed. Um.
As you are, you accept them on your.
Yeah, just like it would be, and and as courtesy, I thought it'd be helpful if there was a. Procedurally to to hear the different viewpoints. I think it's constructive to always hear different viewpoints and to appreciate them. And um. That's the decision we made regarding the evidence. I guess the court will determine whether or not we made a right or wrong decision here. But um I think that's the decision that. That um we reached was that the evidence section of this hearing has has closed. With our scope of review being limited to the. Particular issue on um. On material change of use, then I think I would like to break that down into prongs, because I think it supports the record better. Um. Was whether or not. You believe. There is a material change of the approved use. Or intensification of. As as the first prompt question. On being a material change of use. And the second being an intensive occasion of any use. And I think it would um. Um, the other members of the board that I want to clarify on that, you know, who of course. Express, express um. What? They believe P and Z means by number of change of. You review your intensification of the use and I still will um. Vote on those. I think we will on one. And then the other attorney, Gell, is that logical? With one on one prime and that. But can we just vote on both together, say we?
I think that the first part, one of us, I personally think it was looking at it as a bundle. In their.
Yeah, I was looking at Tom last time for these these of the record that was that, because we just, I feel like it's two separate questions.
You got the motion of his um. Is framed. Right away, you can cover everything.
Okay, so for discussion now, does um. Anyone want to have a discussion on what? Not anyone, what do the board members? Want to have a discussion on what they believe in light of this resolution before, so material change of the approved use. Means and how this is or. Means and how this is or isn't consistent with that, then we'll do it for the second, then we'll have one vote on those two. Any questions?
Nothing to fly, that's at least in my way, I'm a point, but I think we'll hopefully pass it, um. But I think. Well, the building permits, I would sometimes get this line, makes me. The sound part of our decision and deny those two permits is that. We did not view that there was a material change they approved use of the special permit or an intensification of use. On the basis that. There was already a functionality established with what originally had been set for, there was already security, there was already building and operation. And reconfiguring spaces for moving aspects of those functions. Within the property without additionally constructing new property structures. Was not a material change of the approved use. And then further, the fact that there was no additional construction of any kind, whether through an addition of a building structure. Or through a new standalone structure, as well as no expansion of parking spaces. And no change in the actual previously approved functionality of. The categories of purpose, service purpose. Of Grace Farms Foundation, that there was not in that regard an intensification of the use based on those permits. Even if there was any kind of change or increase in employment staffing, that would even. As the basis for why we denied the appeal.
I, I don't, I'm not understanding your motion, I feel like it's. Multiple compounded questions on top of each other, um.
It's hard, it's hard to all bundle them in this.
I think, I think the first question you have to address. Maybe if you broke it down even in a simpler form, what was the approved use, the approved use? I believe at least his agreement on that was for the operations center and security of the property. So then the second question is, is.
If there's, I'm just curious, procedurally, if there's a motion on the floor, can somebody second it, or do we have to have a discussion?
I guess.
It has to be seconded.
Someone's seconding it.
Oh, I took an emotion, this is Christie Bonner.
Anyone want to go in favor of that motion?
Well, you could, it's, once it's seconded, you can discuss.
Go ahead.
It's usually open to discussion, who's seconded, they would be. You know, vote or not.
Anyone want to have a discussion on? That motion?
I don't want to have a discussion on it, but I have to say, I think that the detail that Jessica just put forth in that motion. Would suffice. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm reading clearly that one of the reasons that this is coming back to us, that we did not articulate. The reasons for the denial, and I think that she has specifically articulated. Everything that has been discussed and brought forward fully. And. I'm in favor.
I agree with what you just said, Cynthia, that the, in the, listening to the recordings, at the very beginning, um. Um, a gentleman who's gone around this committee uh. Stated a motion and then six hours transpired, and then a decision was rendered uh, without the details behind that decision. And uh, so I believe that what Jessica's done has answered the court's questions to the board.
So, are you agree? I disagree with that, but I think if you wanna, I disagree with the motion. Not on clarity on these more particular. Questions, um, maybe in subsequent, there may be agreement if it is or is not consistent. But. I, I, I will. Want to, well, go in favor of it, the discussion on, as I said before, I break it down, what's the material, what's the approved use? And what's an intensification? I'd wanna be able to answer those three questions, and I'd wanna be able to say this is not, this wasn't approved use because it was consistent with. A, B, C, that there's not a material change because of a particular reason. And it's not an intensification because they intended, you know, intensification to, you know, be limited by car here or whatever other. Grounds the board decides for, so.
I hope that's broader than what your court has asked us to do, and I would agree with you that maybe we can break it out that way, if I felt that that was the task. What I was reading, but I don't feel. That is what has been asked of us, it seems the court was really looking at us to try to express, to be addressed. Without breaking it out that way, how we were gonna apply this condition six of the special permit to. The two, you know, to fill out before.
So Sarah, I think we have that on the train for the, um, the motion she made, that that might be.
Yeah, so, meetings being recorded, so I'll be able to talk right down.
And, and, Rich Carrington, I, you know, I just to answer, uh, just to go on to, to, uh, go more detail, it, it. Again, my opinion, no material change means that um, there hasn't been an expansion of the footprint. Or there hasn't been an increase in, in, in parking spaces, and there hasn't been any. Material change to the business that the permit was issued under. So to me, I think.
That's the rationale.
For materiality.
That's the rationale of that problem, that I would wanna go down before, I would be comfortable saying, you know, voting for it, that's what each, it isn't just a page of why. Like you were just doing, that's, that's a thought process, um, but again, it's mostly before, Jessica made it, um. If you wanna vote on it, you can vote on it, um, otherwise I would want it for myself, you know, go down that. That definition, I mean, there's different, obviously different views here on, on what we should and shouldn't do, not somebody says it right. So, um. You wanna vote on Jessica's motion now?
I do.
Right, okay, so let's. Vote on it, Christie?
I'm not on it, great.
No. Christie.
I'm a broader approved motion.
Rich Carrington.
Action again.
Carving in favor, Bill in favor.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
You dealt, uh, with the compliance and. So, next, I don't remember, and I guess maybe we have to, everyone else, so you're out of time. Nice, I'm on the other minute, I can be, thank you, the minutes from the last meeting. Did everyone review these minutes?
Yes.
Anyone have any comments regarding the minutes?
No.
Um, and. Who likes? I think, see, we took a meeting with me, Jessica, Cynthia. Christie, I guess you are the issue being sworn in, so you have five people there, vote on.
I do, we excited the minutes.
I'll second that.
I need to answer.
You said my issue being sworn out.
Yeah. Nine twenty.
Could I add one more question to the review? Yeah, I, I, you know, I know there's been some discussion chairman about the uh, I go best. When we go out to properties, I just wanted to point out, I was just playing around one day on Amazon a day or two. And I think it's fourteen dollars a vest, where you did have CBA on the front, Town and New Canaan. On the back, CBA, Town and New Canaan, I think they're like fourteen bucks each on Amazon.
I have my product, we have a budget, we should be able to.
Okay, thank you, Rich, for the insight, I think that'll be helpful, while we're making, I just showing up at people's houses.
Very nice.
Well, why, why?
Don't get upset on you.
Why, why would behind their house, when they can hold, and they have a lot of behind their house?
Is there a dog?
Yeah.
And they don't necessarily believe that you're from CBA, or that you've been on their venue or whenever.
So, um.
Meeting, sure, sir.
Okay, the meetings with, it's nine, nine twenty, meeting's done, thank you everyone.